Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to the January 26th meeting workshop concerning ARP. At this time, would you join me in a prayer? Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us here as we conduct the business of the city and do those things that would be pleasing to be, in your name we pray. Amen. Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ma'am crew, would you call a room?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Bass.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, at this time, we're going to turn this over to Mr. Hughes, City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Alderman. Today, we're going to be talking about all things American Rescue Plan. At this time, we're going to turn it over to Kim Ostrom and other staff members will be coming up and making presentations as well. Kim?
So, as Mr. Hughes said, today, we're discussing the hot topics of ARPA funds. Sharing in this presentation, we have Jordan Hughes, George Childs, Charlie Bichard, and Tony Gatlin is here to answer questions and help with the presentation. I also have Kim Rose, who is our FEMA and grant fund accountant, and she's here to help us as well. So, what is it called? We've heard it referred to by American Rescue Plan, CSLFRF, Coronavirus State and Local Relief Funds, ARPA funds, American Relief Plan, all of those acronyms and some sort of variant variation of ARPA funds. For this purpose, we're going to stick with ARPA, also known as the CSLFRF, which is the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, AKA ARPA funds. So, the funding was issued six, we issued $65.1 billion total in ARPA funds, which the state government had issued. State of North Carolina received $1.37 billion, Craig County received $19.8 million, and St. Petersburg has received $6.7 million. First half of the payments were received last May of 2021, and the second half is expected to be received this May. This is a timeline from the time that the ARPA funds were issued, which was March 3rd, 2021, that was the effective date. We can actually retroactively expense allowable projects under the interim final rule from March 3rd through March, March 3rd, '21 through March 31st, '22, and then from January 6th through March 31st of this year, both the interim and the final rule apply. And then as a 4-1-22, only the final rule applies for these funds. I'd like to bring your attention to the obligated. By December 31st, 2024, we have to have all funds obligated, encumbered, a plan for those, and then by December 31st, 2026, they have to all be expended. If you take a look at that box to your left, and it talks about the water, wastewater, and broadband, it states in there that those projects that are started before March 31st, 2021 can apply towards these funds, but only the expenses after that date can be expensed out of these funds. So, if you already had a project in the works, that's okay, but only the expenditures after that date can be applied. So, head off the press.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, on that one, if we had decided we were going to do the project, the money was in the budget, but we hadn't broke ground or done something, would that be qualified? Because then we're going to spend the money after March 21st, but it was in our 21-22 budget, would that qualify? But we haven't started the work?
Correct.
Okay, but that would be?
Yep. So, this is head off the press. The final rule was effective January 6th. The difference between the interim and the final rule is that we have a broader set of uses to respond to the pandemic's public health and economic impacts. We have a new standard allowance for replacement of lost revenue. It allows for flexibility in eligible broadband investments, and we streamline options for premium pay. The ARPA funds are in four categories. There's four allowable categories for the use of those. The first one on the left here, the teal, that is to address public health and negative economic impact due to COVID. It really supports the COVID-19 mitigation efforts, addresses the negative impact to workers, households, small businesses, and the public sector, and it supports disproportionately impacted communities. The green, the second one, is the replace of lost revenue, and the third one is premium pay for essential workers, for those that bear the greatest, you know, health risks because of the service that they do provide. And then we have the infrastructure investments. The first question we need to ask when we're looking at how to spend these funds is, do we have the statutory authority? And then the second is, what project do they follow, or what category does the project fall under? So, we're going to talk about addressing the COVID public health and economic impact category. The allowable uses under this category must be in response to the disease itself or the harmful consequences of the economic disruptions resulting from the COVID-19 public health emergency. Basically, you need to be able to answer these two questions. What is the specific negative economic impact due to the pandemic? And then, how does the project specifically address the negative economic impact? Some project examples would be construction or renovations to facilities to provide better COVID-19 mitigation, such as new barriers or increased space for social distancing, improvement of ventilation systems. There's expansions and improvements in new projects related to park improvements, bike paths, and greenways to promote healthier living environments. The big question that we hear is, may we use ARPA funds for, maybe share ARPA funds with nonprofits? The answer is sort of a yes and no, or a no and a yes. No, you can't just give them the funds, but you can have a subrecipient relationship. The, if we do choose to do something like that, the subrecipient must still comply with the federal uniform grant guidance. There's some requirements that they have to have, things such as the DUNES number. It cannot be on the federal suspension and debarred list. And that actually includes the subrecipients, contractors, vendors, so none of them can be on that list as well. A risk assessment must be done, assessing whether or not they are a low, medium, or high-risk subrecipient, and that's pretty much done through audits and their experience with federal awards, and whether they have sufficient accounting systems. And we have to do that as the, as the grant, the one that receives the grant funds. So, this basically shows you that before engaging in a subrecipient relationship, the city must develop certain written policies and procedures for that subrecipient monitoring, risk assessment, and compliance obligations. The contract with the subrecipient must contain very specific components of covering the who, what, how, when, where, basically the responsibilities of each party. You have to outline the purpose of the funds in the project summary and make sure that it's an allowable project. You have the, you have to, the expectations and outcomes for both parties, and you address the reporting and documentation requirements. And I just want to also remind you that in this category, we must remember that the city must have the statutory authority of the project or activities that the subrecipient is undertaking. So, the replace lost revenue category, that's the new $10 million standard allowance. When they originally issued this loss, replace lost revenue, it was a formula. I know it's a very complex formula, and you had to recalculate it over the periods. You had to choose if it was an annual calculation or fiscal year calculation. Well, they, for ease, basically, they ended up doing a $10 million standard allowance. And with that, the, you have to make that choice whether you're going to choose that formula, and you have to make that decision before April. But as we get a little bit, dive a little bit more into it, it really truly simplifies how you can spend this money. You have no need to prove actual loss. You are allowed to, but your, the allowable expenditures are on general governmental So, basically, it's the most flexible option, and it allows the planting, which is kind of unheard of with federal funds. What they allow you to do is to shift the funds, in a sense, so you offset the general fund with existing expenses through activities to ARPA funds. And then, the general fund can then be relieved to pay for the project that you want to do or transfer the funds to the project fund that you want to support.
Kim, I have a question. Does this include, like, with the city, if the city had any losses for its utilities?
So, with the standard deduction, I'm not sure if I understand what your question, your question is, but with the standard deduction, they're basically saying, here's 10, up to $10 million, and our award was $6.7 million. You can choose to use that by selecting the revenue loss standard allowance, and then you can spend your funds on general governmental services, and that relieves the, what you have in maybe your general fund or utility fund or wherever, and relieves those, allows you to spend this on, I'll give you an example, police and fire, I'll just choose them. We can take those expenses that we have in our budget, that we spend those funds on, you know, annually, and then put that over here to the ARPA money, and then here, it opens it up for us to then support a project or another initiative.
Okay, well, what I was basically saying was that, say, like, utilities. We had customers that was impacted by the pandemic, so they, did the city have any shortfalls in revenue because of utility services that we did not disconnect citizens, they didn't pay for the service, we did not disconnect them, and so this, the service wasn't paid for? That's what I was saying for utility services.
So, I think Charlie can speak on that.
Okay.
But there was no revenue loss?
I think there's two parts to the answer. Revenues did decrease to some extent because businesses didn't operate maybe at full capacity. So, that's one side of the equation. Revenue collections from customers that there were suspended disconnects, we were made whole. We recovered all those all.
Okay. So, you didn't see a significant decrease for, as you're saying, as a lost revenue there?
I haven't looked to see exactly how COVID impacted all businesses and what the change in revenues are to the utility, but as far as suspended disconnects go, we are whole with regards to suspended disconnects. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So, Kim, from a general fund perspective, the only loss in revenue would be ad valorem tax payments that would be made, correct?
I'm sorry.
So, for the general fund, any, any loss of revenue out of the general fund would just be any unpaid ad valorem taxes, correct?
Correct, though we didn't show actually any loss of revenue.
So, we can't, I mean, this particular section right here is not really relevant if we haven't had a loss of revenue to use as funds to?
It is, because what they said is, you don't have to prove that you had loss of revenue. Here's up to $10 million you made this selection, the standard selection.
Okay.
And you, as long as you're spending it on general government services, you're good to go. So, it's basically like a blank check is the way they're addressing it, and they said, you know, school of government has said, you guys, it's a no-brainer at this point.
So, if we would have gotten $14 million, we could have used $10 million pretty much ever how we wanted to, but the $4 million would have had more restriction.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, what's the point in all this whole presentation if we've got $6 million that we can spend how we want to?
Well, I think, just to give you all the information so that you can make an educated decision.
Okay, but we, pretty much anything we want to do with the $6 million, we can do it as long as it's a function of city government.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
So, don't tune me out now.
I'm trying to save you some time.
Any more questions on that, though? So, US Treasury provides a non-exclusive list of examples for general government services, and it basically covers your maintenance or PECO-funded building of infrastructure and including roads, modernization of cybersecurity, environmental remediation, police, fire, and other public safety services. They have in here that PECO capital that benefits the citizens, that one. Anything equal to or greater than $1 million, I know, requires written justification, but anything less than that, you, it's good to go. You just have to follow the procurement policies of the uniform grant guidance. There's, on the not allowed side, we cannot pay for the extra pension fund contributions, cannot borrow money, can't put it towards financial reserves or pay for any kind of settlement and judgment, cannot undermine or discourage compliance with CDC, violate the conflict of interest provisions, and of course, you can't violate any state laws or federal laws and regulations.
So, let me ask you a question on that. In other words, like, you've given in our audit a cap rate, police pension fund, at least like 2.5% or something, and you've given us a variance one way or the other. And your prior page, you said, we can't fund, flip over, back to your back page, your prior page.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Pension fund contributions not allowed. But in the general fund, as we said, if you want to infuse that money into the general fund, and you want to change your cap rate on your police pension fund, which is 2 something, or if you want to do it, one of your other funds' cap is like 7, or just hit 6 or 8, whichever, you circumventingly could take this money and fund a pension by way of the general fund, if you change that cap rate.
So, you can still use pension contributions, you just cannot send, some people have debt to the pension fund, and they can't just make lump sum payments on that. If it's based on your salaries and it's in benefits and those calculations, so yeah, you absolutely can apply the, towards, towards that, but you can't do lump sum or pay down debt.
Okay, so what, in other words, not allowed pension fund contributions, is that the annual amount of money, the 5% or whatever total budget funds that's going over there to fund these pensions, or what is that, what does that say in pension fund contributions?
It's just saying you can't pay extra towards it, but you can pay, if you, if you have somebody, if you're paying salaries and benefits for services, then that's okay, but you cannot pay extra. You cannot just isolate and say, we're going to pay additional pension fund contributions in this amount with these funds. Am I answering your question? I'm sorry.
You're doing, this can be done. I mean, no disrespect, you're doing a good job, it's just, let's go on to the next.
Okay. It's more for those big debts that they owe to the pension fund.
But, hold on, but you could take up to $10 million of whatever this payment is, put that into the general fund, pay for the police, fire, department salaries, and parks and recreation, whatever comes out of the general fund, and then take that excess revenue and swap it over and pay it in the pension fund.
Yeah, you're just shifting.
Because then you can supplant the federal funding.
Yes, you're just shifting. So, your, but I do want to correct you just a little bit, you'll be taking those expenditures and applying it towards the ARPA funds to offset your general fund.
Right.
You're not taking the ARPA funds and, and just dumping it in revenue to the general fund.
That's financial speaking, but basically, you've got money in this pot, and you've got money in this pot, and you can put some more money over here and take some out of it and move it over here.
Yes, lots of shifting.
It's one of those things, like, if you fund, you have to fund things out of your funds, whatever that is.
So, in regards to premium pay, before issuing premium pay, the city must adopt a premium pay policy, and we have to identify the essential workers. There are rules attached regarding their pay. There's a cap of $13 an hour or $25,000 overall per person. It must supplement in this pay, not the plan, and they must comply with the 150% rule. In regards to infrastructure, it's the same projects eligible under the revolving loan programs or eligible under the ARPA funds, such as existing infrastructure upgrades, stormwater limitations, limitations are to water quality, and then the eligible projects are centralized wastewater treatment, energy conservation, water conservation, stormwater with quality components. And at this time, I'm going to pass this over to Jordan to talk a little bit about NCDQ and ARPA funding.
Thank you, Kim. Mayor, members of the board, I'm going to try to do my best to not muddy the water too much with everything Kim's already mentioned to you. So, I know in some of our previous conversations over the last six to nine months, Alderman Bingle, a couple of our board members have asked me about the large sums of money that are coming out of NCDQ for water and wastewater projects. So, what we've got here is a real quick summary of the additional money, nothing to do with the 6.7 million that Kim has already talked about. This is additional money that's coming out of the state that's going to get dished out for water, wastewater, and stormwater projects statewide. So, what the General Assembly has allocated is $1.6 billion for water and wastewater and stormwater projects to be dished out through all water, wastewater systems across the state. That is the good news, and they've done that over five different categories. I've got those broken out for you at the bottom. Basically, all the, the top four of those categories are all water and wastewater categories, but the very last one is actually a stormwater category. As you see, you can see the amount that will be allocated for each one of those, those categories, quite a bit of money that's going to be out there. That's the good news. Here's sort of the bad news. If you look at the table here, this is sort of a summary and breakdown of how that funding's allocated, and those are the five different categories that they're allocating the funding across, and the first column there lists the dollar amounts, lists the numbers, that's the money that's already been allocated. So, as they developed the session law for this, they went ahead and made direct allocations to a number of water, wastewater, and stormwater utilities across the state. Those were directly allocated, they don't have to apply for grants, those monies have already been essentially handed out. And as you will see, that's quite a bit of, the very bottom there, $8.3 million, essentially $840 million of that money has already been handed out. So, what's left is $758 million across five categories. The top two categories that have the big red circles beside are categories that the city of New Bern will not be eligible for. These are for at-risk systems, or, I'm sorry, distressed systems and systems that are at risk of being distressed. These are normally very small utilities that are having trouble with outdated infrastructure and do not have the financial means to kind of bring these into repair or into current state standards. Trying to think of local examples, you're thinking of really small systems, I think of like the town of Pollocksville, things of that locally may put it in perspective. So, systems like that statewide are, who will qualify for these two buckets of money? The next one down is the one that's really available for everybody. This is one that you're bringing up, I for, along with every other system in the state, Raleigh, Charlotte, Greensburg, Greenville, Fayetteville, will all be competing for these dollars. As you can see, there's 54.1 million left there, the maximum grant award for those projects will be up to $15 million. So, even though that sounds like a lot of money, I would anticipate to see probably another half a dozen, maybe 10 projects awarded statewide, and that'll capture the remaining funds in that. Below that, the $77 million that's left for engineering studies, and that is essentially what that is, so those are asset inventory studies, sewer inflow studies, regionalization studies, merger studies. That's essentially just engineering study and planned work associated with water and wastewater projects. In all likelihoods, we'd have a pretty good chance at getting a grant in that, in that study pool. There's a lot of money available, and the maximum grant's only going to be $400,000, so those will cover a lot of study grants for a lot of systems, and we will try our best to go after some of that funding. And the last one there is $82 million available for direct stormwater infrastructure. This is something fairly new for North Carolina. Normally, they do, have historically had a lot of funding available through grants and loans for water, wastewater projects. This is one of the few first times they've actually had a large sum of money available, grant money available for just stormwater infrastructure. It's so new, in fact, they really don't have the application criteria and the scoring criteria set up yet, so it's going to be a little longer before they figure out exactly what they're going to do with the applications, what the maximum award's going to be. I would suspect it would be much like the water and wastewater projects, where you're probably looking at a 10 to 15 million dollar maximum award per grant recipient. So, even there, you're probably only looking at the $82 million covering another, you know, half a dozen or 10 projects as well. So, the good news, there's money out there. The bad news, the bulk of it has already been directly allocated through the General Assembly. What's left will be highly competitive. We'll be working with Margaret Shields, Public Works Park, myself, putting together the best applications we can to try to compete in everywhere we can in these three categories. The likelihood of getting this is going to be, be small, and we're going to make a good case if we can. So, just wanted to put this out there to, to kind of give you a quick summary, that there has been a lot of money pushed out to water, wastewater projects, but when you push it out statewide, the numbers get really small, what's actually available for each system, and even there, what's available for New Bern, because we don't fit in any of the distressed categories or at-risk categories, are the percentage of the grant money that we can actually go after is smaller and smaller and smaller. So, this is one of the few times that you're, it's a bad thing to be a well-run, well-managed, you know, from a operations side to a financial side. New Bern has a well-run water, wastewater, you know, system. Because of that, we've kind of disqualified from competing for a lot of these funds.
So, Jordan, I have a question for you, please.
Yes, ma'am.
So, in reference to the stormwater, now, this is where, would your department be handling that application process, or would that go through public works?
That'd be through public works, working, working with our grant writer, trying to come up with applications. We'll probably have a lot of language in these that are the same in the wastewater, water application, and the stormwater application that'll duplicate. So, we'll all kind of, we'll team up the best we can, try to put together applications that kind of paint the best picture we can, trying to build resiliency in these systems. And I think that would probably be our best approach of trying to get some of this grant funding. The timeline of this, at the end of this month, 1st of February, the state is supposed to kind of publish the new application criteria and scoring criteria. Once we have that, we'll have an idea how to really draft a project or projects around what the scoring criteria is going to be, to try to check as many boxes as we can and do as well as we can in this competitive scoring.
Let me ask you another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, with the same stormwater here, and you're talking about the $82 million, and, but, now, is this, is this also in reference to the, is it the same as the state Clean Water Revolving Fund? Is that basically the same, or this is something totally different?
Totally different. This is much like the ARP money that New Bern's getting, this lump sum of money that we've never gotten before, that the state's getting the same thing, and they're pushing it out in several different ways, and this is one area that they're pushing out almost $1.7 billion for water and wastewater infrastructure, and also stormwater infrastructure improvement.
So, then, you're telling me that we, as a city, can go in from, and apply for a grant under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is part of this same money?
It'll be a separate, it'll, it'll follow some of the same application and the same review procedures that are, that have historically been in place for the state revolving loan grants and also the clean water money. However, this is kind of set aside. These are very special pools of money that they're, when you send your application, you will basically check the box that we are applying to these pools of money. Like I said, there hasn't been true grant money available to this size and this volume ever for water, wastewater, and stormwater projects in North Carolina. So, this is like, just much like our ARP money is. So like, just much like our ARP money is very unique and a one-time thing, this should be considered the same thing. It's very unique and it's a one-time thing.
So it would be who, as a city, to apply for some of this funding?
We will, we are certainly, like I say, until the state has finalized the application criteria, we know exactly, you're gonna have ten points if you check this box and fifteen points if you check that box. It's difficult to really say how you're gonna try to apply for it without knowing what the criteria is. So by the end of this month, the first of February, that criteria should come out for the water wastewater projects, and we'll have a better, a better idea of what our scope needs to be for a project for water wastewater. And then this summer, they will come out with the, or scheduled to come out with the application criteria for the stormwater projects, and we'll have a real good idea of what's the best way to try to put together an application package for stormwater projects. That kind of leads me to the next slide.
Hey, Jordan, before you do that, go back, go back to that slide, I was gonna ask a question about. So out of this one point six billion dollars, eight hundred and thirty-nine million has already been allocated. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And when did this become available?
Good question.
And why, who gave out eight hundred and forty billion dollars or million dollars before we even got an opportunity to apply for any of it?
North Carolina General Assembly. In passing the law that allocated the funding, they went ahead and directly allocated a lot of money. And we actually did get some money in this. We were able to secure two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for water wastewater projects and seventy-five thousand dollars for stormwater improvements. And we're currently working on a, kind of put that together for a project.
That's just, it's hard for me to believe that the General Assembly would give out eight hundred and forty million dollars before they even let us know about it, or to let us have an opportunity to apply for it. I wonder how much of that money was east of I-95?
There were some chunks in there. It's all broken out in session law, and I can actually, I'll make that package available to Foster, and he can pass along to the board members. And the, actually in the law that got approved, there's several pages of who the recipients were and the amounts. And they range from, the seventy-five thousand dollars was probably one of the smaller ones, upwards of thirty million dollars, there's a couple in there for thirty, thirty-five million dollars. They do go statewide, there's, I can't think of another one in Craven County other than the two we have, but there are some east of I-95, they're scattered across the state.
Jordan, one question. How much of our water now the blend is Black Creek?
Still running about a fifty-fifty blend.
So my question is this, is it, obviously, if we were getting this grant opportunity years ago, when the state mandated that we go into, back into Castle Hain, is there any possibility, or has any other city tried to get some of the grant money to scrub the water a little bit more? You know, because that's a major complaint the Almond is, is that Castle Hain water. Is there any possibility of any type of a grant application to scrub, scrub the water more with the Castle Hain?
There could be, there could be, you could, you could have a water-centric project that focused on advanced.
I mean, wouldn't that be a pretty reasonable project?
It would depend on, like I said, it's gonna be highly competitive, so I don't know how well that would compete based, based on the scoring criteria versus, I think, given everything the state's been through in the last five years or last decade, I really think ties back to resiliency, what you can do to make your infrastructure, you know, your bones of your systems stronger, more resilient to, you know, future weather events is probably, probably the projects that score the highest or the, or the most likely to get funded.
So you don't think that would score? Oh, and I ask you, you have a lot of complaints about the water, don't you?
Well, my complaints, blue water rise with low water pressure. I mean, I don't, I had enough complaints about the water myself that I put in a software system in my house because it was so bad. But it's just the way it is nowadays.
The, at the shovel-ready portion of that, could that qualify?
It certainly could, yes, sir. There again, I don't know how well that will score until we get the criteria out, and we're kind of really waiting to figure out what project we push forward in the application, depending on what this criteria looks like and which one we think will score the best and have the.
Is this more bricks and mortars, is this more engineering? Like, what, what is this money for? Is this for actual infrastructure?
Two different buckets. So what you've got left there, the fifty-four point one million, that's actual sticks and bricks, they want to see something built with that. Below that, where you've got seventy-seven point six million dollars, that is all just engineering and planning money. So that is regionalization studies, asset inventory studies, SSES, or those are trying to go out there and figure out where your problems are. And because the maximum grant is only four hundred thousand dollars for those, you'll probably see a large number of those funded. Whereas the sticks and bricks projects, a maximum grant amount of fifteen million dollars, you only got fifty-four million to spend, you could, you could in theory have four projects statewide that consume the rest of that money.
Okay.
So highly competitive is the thing to remember, not a lot of money left, we're gonna do the best job we can to get our hands on as much of it as we can. And real quick, just to run down the schedule, as I mentioned before, end of this month, first part of next month, they're gonna finalize what those application criteria are gonna be for the water wastewater projects. We'll get everything ready, get those submitted this spring, and they're looking to make awards in May, June window of who gets, that's gonna be what they call the first round. I doubt very seriously there'll be any funding left over for a second round. I think they'll go ahead and divvy it all out in the May round. And then later this summer, they will, they will finalize the criteria for the stormwater project and looking at, probably trying to get that set up where we can make application, and they'll make awards for the stormwater money in, in the fall, in their typical fall window. So the stormwater will be highly competitive as well, because everybody will have their hands. There's a lot of places that don't have water wastewater systems, but do have, almost every city or county has some type of stormwater infrastructure. So there's even more hands in the pot when you look at the stormwater, you know, the stormwater applicants that could be in there.
Is there any preference to resiliency, or since the issues that we've had and what we're doing in Duffy Field, could this apply to that, or would we be in a better position to apply for?
We're gonna try to, like I say, when they come out with that scoring criteria and the application package, we'll really know what the state's looking for, what's gonna be their highest priority, and we'll be able to develop, you know, some grant applications that try to check as many boxes as we can. Hopefully, some of the work we've done on some of those other grant applications and some of the projects we already have ongoing, help check some of those boxes. The state likes to see this, this isn't just a shot from the hip, this is something that you've been working on, a problem you've already identified, you've got a plan going forward. All those things typically help you score higher, but until you actually see the application, know what the criteria is that we just, we don't know.
Thank you.
And like the rest of the ARP funding, the deadlines are the same. We would have to have, if we were awarded any of this, we'd have to have it encumbered by December of twenty-four and then have it fully expended by December of twenty-six, which I wouldn't see it being much of an issue. Any questions? Not, I'll turn it back over to Kim.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thanks.
So with the ARP funds, there are multiple levels of laws and regulations and compliance requirements that overlap, and they just want to be careful, because every expenditure that we do have, whether it's salaries, benefits, contract services, capital improvements, they all have specific rules under the various laws.
Well, Kim, with that, is there a contributory amount the state has due, or is this a hundred percent federal money?
This is a hundred percent federal money. However, there are some, depending on the type of expenditure, there is some influence from the state's law. So the Uniform Grant Guidance requires that we have certain policies and procedures in place, and this is just kind of a snippet, that we have to adopt these policies before we can even spend a dollar of these funds.
Are any of these policies that we're going to have to adopt, or that we already have them, have them in place?
No, we'll have to adopt several policies.
Okay.
We have about half of these policies in place currently.
Is that just in-house policy change?
Some of these things will be brought to the board for approval.
So what's next? Very first thing we need to decide is if we want to elect the standard allowance deduction, that answer is due in April. And then I think we need to take a look at what are the needs for the city, what current deficiencies need to be addressed, what projects are on the punch list that we haven't funded yet, what is our wish list, of course, and what are the needs and wants for the community? What are the needs of the city due to the negative impact of COVID? The next step would be to prioritize that as a group and then evaluate it. Is it reasonable? Do we have community buy-in? Does it fit in within the timeline? Is it allowable? What category does it fit in? And then, you know, what other funds are available possibly to support those projects? And lastly, is it sustainable? What future expenses will we incur if we undertake that specific project? So in the upcoming slides, we, we share some needs and unfunded projects that are on the table, which are also allowable under the ARP funds. Cybersecurity concerns is one of them. Tony provided some statistics here that the significant cyber attacks happen every fourteen seconds, with ransomware being the most concerning. There's forty-four significant cyber incidences in North Carolina public sector for the last two years, averaging seven hundred thousand to a million dollars, and with recovery taking about six to nine months. The recommendation for some cybersecurity solutions have been listed. It's about four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars with vulnerability, scanning software, managed detection and response, SIEM logging system and security awareness training.
I mean, is that citywide, police-wide everything, when you say forty-eight thousand?
Yes, that would, that would include scanning of our entire network, all the resources on it.
How long would that study take?
Excuse me?
How long would that take?
Well, the vulnerability scanning is actually something that's conducted by specialized software. It's generally conducted multiple times. You would typically do it like once a week or so. It actually only takes an hour or so for the software to scan through the network.
Okay.
Tony, has any of the cities close by had any issues with this? Did I not read well back, did Greenville have?
Yes, Greenville has had an issue with this, as has a set of number of cities in North Carolina in the last several years, and of course, across the country. And it pretty much shuts down your network when it happens. They encrypt all the data on it. A law was recently passed, the way it works is the cyber criminals will encrypt your data, and then they will provide you an untraceable mechanism of paying a ransom payment in order to get a key to unlock your data, an electronic key. But North Carolina actually just passed a law, we are not allowed to pay that ransom. So if we are encrypted, the recourse that we have available to us would be to go to off-site backups, which, which we have. And, but the best course is to try to prevent it from happening in the first place, and these are some of the measures we would use to try to do that, in addition to cybersecurity measures we already have in place.
So how long would this forty-eight thousand dollar expenditure serve the city as far as?
That's the estimated cost for one year.
For one year?
Yes.
That's just for the scanning, right?
Yeah, that's just for the scanning, yes.
Are we doing anything like that right now?
We have done some, some trials with scanning. Due to not having the funding available, we don't have a regular and permanent scanning program in place.
And what does this whole package add up to?
Four hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Four hundred and sixty-three thousand, and then what would be the annual reoccurring cost?
Hmm, that would be the annual reoccurring cost.
So it's four hundred thousand dollars from now on out?
Yes, if we wanted to continue with, with all of these capabilities on an ongoing basis. There's some value to doing it initially, but as you know, your, your networks, the data on them, the, the software you're running is in a constant state of flux as we add new services and capabilities. So anytime there's a change, there's a possibility for some sort of compromise or insecurity creep into your network, that, that these different mechanisms would be designed to help you either defend against or detect.
And we've already seen that, we've already seen that going on with a lot of different companies and organizations already.
Yes, yes. Unfortunately, the, the bad actors that perpetrate these crimes, they are investing in research and development, just like we are. They constantly come up with new ways to attack your networks.
Would this replace any software that we currently have?
No, no, these are all new capabilities that, it would supplement some that we have. I, I don't want to give the impression that we're not doing a lot to provide for cybersecurity now. Fact is, is we do.
Yeah, what I was wondering, if we were paying two hundred thousand dollars for some security solution that this would replace, and we could save two hundred thousand dollars because we wouldn't need that one?
No, this, these would pretty much be new capabilities that we don't currently have. And the reason we don't have them is obvious from the numbers you see on the screen, it's just not something our budget has been able to support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So next we have Charlie, you can talk a little bit about the electric system capacity improvement or.
Good afternoon. The electric system long-range plan identifies limited capacity, system capacity, and contingencies to reroute power between the north side of the river and the south side of the Trent River. We have three substations total, two of them are on the north side of the Trent River, one's on the south side of the Trent River, and we have a total of six transformers within those three substations. Our modeling indicates voltage drops between usable voltage levels under critical loading condition and as load grows and as our system territory grows. So voltage drop is a real concern. Most importantly, there is no contingency if we lose one of those transformers under peak conditions. We have no other option but to shed load. The fix, about ten thousand mil, ten million dollars in a capacity improvement project. Presently funded, five hundred thousand dollars in a project fund to help me get started with that. Thank you very much. We're in the process of doing land acquisitions right now and interviewing engineers that can work on the engineering design process for us. And the balance of that, of that expenditure is assumed to be, I'll come back to even ask for a grant, if we're successful there, we're debt service. So any possible funding that we can get from this program would offset any debt service more, but most realistically.
Charlie, if you had, you've got six, I didn't say transformers, you're talking about major, two hundred K down to twenty K or whatever.
Yes, sir, the big ones.
But if you had twenty of them, if you can't backfeed two of them from one other, it wouldn't matter how many transformers you had, to can't backfeed like Lewis Farm Road as far out as it is unless you get that four substation.
Correct.
Is that what we're, we're down at sea? So that, that deal we had a couple of years ago, that don't happen again? And I know you, you've worked with Duke on that a little bit, but we're not where we want to be with that. So is that part of this?
That's all part of that. Part of this, this project, this ten million dollars that I speak of, would be setting a new substation on the south side of the Trent River. I've got a site located off of County Lang Road, presently working with property owners out there right now and doing land appraisals. I'll be back to you very soon with.
How many acres would you be getting?
For the substation, four acres, but there's a lot of easements and rights of way that affect other property owners that I'm going through right now. So I don't have that total off the top of my head, but.
I know you talked a little bit about probably some of your more maximal use areas, you would take a south gate transformer, probably put out there, put a new one, and.
Is that.
For sizing purposes. and get for size and purposes or?
Yes, sir. Part of the plan, once we get a new substation over on the south side, we'll move some load from Trent Road Substation and from the Glen Burnie Substation. We'll move that across the river and serve it from the new substation. That'll free up capacity over here, those two substations, to further serve that growing area in West New Bern. So we'll have additional capacity there to be ready to serve that part of the city as it grows westward.
You know, we've been talking about this for a long time now, and Charlie keeps telling us the need is there. You know, we need to quit. Whether we use ARP funds or whatever kind of funds we use, we need to move forward on this project before we wake up one summer morning and somebody doesn't have any power and we don't have enough transformer or we have a transformer that goes out that we can't feed everybody in New Bern. I mean, we just need to move on this project.
And Charlie, some of that is that if you had cogeneration with diesel or natural gas, I mean, that would be nothing. In other words, like if you had a major feed went out at Lewis Farm Road, and I mean, there's no way of cogenerating. Even if you were legally allowed to do it, you're not, that's not going to be anything, right?
It's not feasible. And on top of it, our purchase power agreement restricts our ability to have that much generation.
So, and you and I talked a little bit about the battery situation. Do you want to update on that at this time?
Yes, just thank you. As you recall, last workshop, I was advising the folks of Emerging Project Battery Energy Storage. And it was about a $4.2 million investment, and the return is about $1.4 million annually. So it's a really great, exciting project where we can avoid some costs on our purchase power supply. I've been silent on that since the last talk to you. It's very much on my radar screen, but Duke is fighting against it. They're fighting very, very hard. This summer, they filed a grievance with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. We won that, and they filed an appeal. This fall, we won that appeal. Yesterday, I got an update that we won the D.C. District Court Appeals Hearing unanimously. And I'm meeting with the Kempa membership tomorrow, and we'll be discussing what our next steps are. So hopefully, I'll be back with some recommendation on that project. I would suggest that's a $5 million project with a payback.
Charlie, if we were to jump on that project now and Duke's lobbyists, whatever, they get a law changed in Raleigh that would prohibit that, would we be grandfathered in?
Rolodex? We don't know. We could certainly start that project. There are some communities that have started it, taken the risk. I've not brought that to you because I didn't think the risk would be well received. But if you want to take the risk.
Well, if you're talking about batteries, it's more about shelf life. If you were going to get peak demand down, I'd rather see if we could legally do it with the generator because the shelf life of a generator might be much slower than the batteries will be.
I agree with you. Part of what I'm doing behind the scenes with this fight against, Duke has against battery energy storage, I would gladly trade batteries for generators any day of the week for a number of reasons. And.
You gladly would do what?
Trade generators.
Generators.
Did I say it backwards?
Yeah, you did.
I'm sorry.
I like to say batteries. You had me a little concerned there.
Thank you for correcting me.
Yes, sir.
I would trade generators for batteries any day of the week. And what I'm hoping comes out of this is we get some relief on our generator capacity, allowable generator capacity. And if that's the case, I would recommend a generator project over a battery project. But if we can only do one, if we can only do battery, it's still a good project and it's a payback for the community.
And then, you remember, we spent some $400,000.
Burke is our best friends.
And I think, even though the city of New Bern along with Rocky Mountain, and we're five original, Rocky Mountain, New Bern pretty much split the bill for 36 cities. I'd say it's a lot of money, but it was worth their penny of it for the purchase, you know, the buyout. And I do mention to you, I think the board, if you see fit, that there's anything that the city of New Bern needs to do for proper lobbying of our position. And I know you're comfortable with what Electric Cities is doing. And there's since, you know, not going along with that if that's working. But I know that Fayetteville would not get in the original power play or the purchase in 1981 because they would not allow them to continue and co-generate with, they were using natural gas generators. And so that was a point of contention. But certainly, if you look at their rates, it worked very well for Fayetteville. And so I'm really thinking, I really appreciate you doing all this research and studying. And how much of the grid, do you have a percentage of how much of the grid is on the south side versus are the future trending? Is the growth of housing startups? Obviously, is it on parity, the north and the south? Because obviously, there's a lot more demographic, you know, smaller infrastructure over here. But the growth patterns are on the south side?
The near future, I think it's on the west side because there's more been started out there. And the 43 connectors coming back, from what I understand, so that will promote some. Over on the James City side, I think some of that investment is slowing down to some extent due to the highway widening project, and we're not seeing quite as much growth right there. But I do believe there's probably a lot of land. Our water goes out and can serve up towards the Catfish Lake Road area so that there's probably more room to grow. Talking to the property owner for the County Line Road Substation. If that goes in, they have already are planning on trying to extend Airport Road, Old Airport Road, across County Line Road and serve that large parcel and develop that. So there's growth on both sides of the river. It's real.
Charlie, the email that we received, I don't know if it was from you or from Foster during this cold weather last week, said something about our highest amount of distribution was 120, what, mega? Whatever they call it, megawatts, is that right?
Correct.
And we were at 95?
We were this past week. The highest we've seen on our system is about 123 megawatts. That was in January of 2018, and we were at a very critical point.
So that's about maxed out for us?
Yes.
And so this new substation that you're proposing over on the James City side would certainly increase that amount quite a bit?
Yes, and it allows more growth on both sides of the river. And it also allows improved reliability and resiliency. We can move load across the river more easily. If you recall back in Florence, and then shortly thereafter, the Duke outage, we tried to carry the north side of the river on the Lewis Farm Substation, which is on the south side of the river. And we can't carry that much load.
So if we were to authorize tonight to allow you to spend this money, how long would it take for you to get this in place?
It'd probably be.
Which we're not going to do. I was just wondering about the timeline.
It's, it would probably be in service in about two years. So the lead time on the transformers right now, I heard today, 100 weeks. Last year, it was probably 38 to 52 weeks. We could get lucky and find space in a manufacturer's capacity, but they're long lead times. I would get started with everything else in the project, all the engineering foundations, get all those things moving along. I wouldn't delay the project just waiting on the transformers. I'd have the project ready to set those transformers when they arrive. So I'd say realistically, a couple of years to get it in service and seeing the benefit of it.
Something maybe help us understand better. Were you having to manually load, maintain in the city? I know that we do load management, but were we having to do arbitrary load management up and above what we normally would?
We were making load management decisions on hot water tanks, heat strips, generation, and operating those devices.
So if we didn't, would we hypothetically have a brownout at some point?
Yes.
I didn't say blackout, I said brownout.
Well, it would be brown.
I mean, you don't have brownout versus.
I don't know what's worse.
I mean, these are serious situations. If you're, if what I think you were having to do, you were doing it for load management when the system may be designed. It's no different than a 200 amp circuit breaker in your house. If you're throwing 240 up there, something's going to happen.
Right, if you come in and you try to serve a second house off the panel in your house, breakers are going to trip and it's going to go out.
And that's.
We need more capacity. Plug too many crock pots in and the circuit breaker trips.
Well, I mean, board's very sensitive to what happened with the, what was it? About six-hour blackout, if we can call it that.
December.
December 2018.
We're very sensitive to that happening and not happening again. Particularly, can you incorporate in your projected needs some type of a redundant loop with this?
That's included in this project, the ability to move some of that load that was off during the 2018.
See, I'm saying for example. Let's say if you took that new substation on Old Airport Road. When you did it, if you had a tandem feed to Lewis Farm Road to that connector, I mean, Duke Power lines don't give you all you need either way. Could you have exonerating redundant lines to feed in case you had a guy with a flail mower out there?
Yes.
Taking the cable down and knocking the phase out?
Yes.
See, and that's what we don't have, right?
We don't have enough of them. When we build a new substation, we have those connections right now. But they, we need another substation to move that load to. So we'll be building some of those distribution caps, those interconnects, as I always call them. So we can move that load around between Lewis Farm, Glen Burnie, Trent Road, vice versa.
Yeah, I think the other, it's not concern, but it's far-reaching is that if you went with this $10 million, you're looking more, and again, it depends on when the General Assembly makes decisions or Electric Cities gets favorable cogeneration. Technically, we spent all this money on AMI, and we're not going to be using AMI load management as much as we are holistic macro versus micro load management. Is that correct?
No, I say we keep our investment. AMI is here to serve us for a long time.
But if you're macro load managing, if you did with all this money, wouldn't you cut back on the micro end of the load management? Because the macro is going to be doing the micro load management, isn't it?
If we're talking about putting battery energy storage in or additional generation, I'd suggest we continue to use our other load management devices and continue to have additional cost avoidance and double dip, so to speak.
So Charlie, so what you're presenting here tonight is this, you're asking for this one substation, which will be generated, generated, correct? Help me out here with this.
It's not a generator, it's a substation connected to Duke.
Okay, which is electric substation, correct?
Correct, and will deliver power, distribute power from that location.
And this is going to cost $10 million?
Yes, ma'am.
And am I correct, but didn't we talk about this when we was talking about our capital investment plan?
Yes, ma'am.
We've been talking about it for a while.
I know, so that's what.
And you went so far as you created a project fund to help me get started.
Right.
And you put $500,000 in that. And I've been working on land acquisition and procuring engineering services to get started on it. So I am moving forward with this. Next step, I'll come back and I'll recommend an engineer that we hire, and I'll be recommending property to purchase. And so we'll have some expenditures there. And once we get that resolved, it will be, I'll be asking for funding either debt service or if we get lucky and I find a grant, I'll be asking for the rest of the $10 million.
That's what I was going to ask you about, grant funding.
Kim, we are working on grants. I'm not real hopeful, but we're not giving up. The timing, it comes down to timing, it comes down to qualifying for the grant. And they're highly competitive, but.
What's, just estimate on what type of grant funding were you talking about looking at?
We're asking for the total $10 million.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Book, it's $6 million we're asking for a grant.
Sure. Go ahead. I had a question for either you or Kim. Our revenue bond debt service for AMI, when is that going to be satisfied? And what is the annual payment? Any ideas?
I don't have that right now, but I can get back to you on that.
Okay, because to me, I'll jump ahead real quick and make a statement. To me, this ARP money has sort of been a gift. We can debate whether or not we should have got it or where it came from and all that. Point is, is we haven't spent. To me, I think enterprise funds should be spent by the enterprise, and it shouldn't be separated. You can raise your rates on your electric and order of your sewer to pay for infrastructure improvements or making your grid bigger or better. To me, this ARP money, I think, should be spent in general fund activities. Because you don't get money given to you in this type of situation, really, ever. So for not discounting you or any other utilities, Jordan's got a separate fund, it's unlikely he could pull from them. But to me, I think that this project is certainly worth it. I think the board voted unanimously to move forward with this project several months ago. But I would like to see what that debt service is and when that's going to be satisfied because I think we're already paying a pretty big chunk for AMI.
I looked at it a couple of months ago, I think it was 2023, but I'll double check.
Which you said it would take two years for this to be online anyway.
Yes.
And we would obviously finance this.
Yeah, I think the utilities are in a good position to finance it and take on debt service. If that's a direction to choose.
Okay.
Charlie, Bob, you go ahead and answer your question.
Oh, no, I agree with you, Jeff. You know, we definitely, I think we just need to move forward with this project because it's been asked for now for long enough. Charlie's our expert, Charlie is recommending it. Charlie's basically warning us without giving us a verbal warning that we could actually have some problems. I mean, when we're at 120 megabytes and we're already at 90, during a storm, we're at 95.
Megabyte.
I don't know how, what'd you say?
Megabyte.
Megabyte?
I think that's.
I don't know.
I think that's.
Megawatt? Whatever it is, megawatts. I've been talking to Sutton Lake today, that might be where. Is that where megabytes come in at? But anyway, we need to move this project forward. And I would certainly encourage this board to let's not kick this can down the road much longer, it's two years out if we restart today. But I wanted to say one more thing. Charlie and his crew are already looking in the future. I live in Toburn, and Toburn is fed, I think, off the New Bern feeder, is that correct? And the cutoff for the Lewis Farm feeder is about Thurman Road. And when you guys lose our New Bern feeder, we're out of power over there. So Charlie has built a line in so he can backfeed us through the Lewis Farm feeder if that happens again in the future. So he's already working on this redundancy thing. And I want to thank you for it, Charlie. I trust you, you know, whatever you recommend, you're the expert. As you can tell, I'm a megawatt versus a megabyte type person. So I think we need to move this project down the road, and we need to get grooving on it right away.
Charlie, one thing, if rates stayed stabilized as far as wholesale rate purchases. I had hoped that when the debts pay off in 2025, you know, we could pass some savings along. But obviously, I don't have a clue as to what the annual debt is, that standard cost payout or the buyout. But I would assume, obviously, that about the time this stuff comes online wouldn't be too much time difference between when the debt is paid off. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's about $3 million a year and it comes off in 2025.
Is the pay, is what we pay?
Yes.
Three million. And so if you're talking $10 million, the annual debt on down of whatever, 10-year, 20-year, 15-year, would be nothing?
Nothing.
Yep.
I think we need to move on it.
Yep.
Yep. What do you think?
What do we have to do? Can we do, give him directions tonight? Well, I make a motion, I don't know, can I make a motion on this or do I just give directions?
Give directions.
Yeah.
Well, he's already got his project fund, he's already working.
I have the direct, I think I have the direction I need. I'll be coming back with other recommendations.
Is it a direction of the board members who may have a problem moving forward with this?
I know, you just need to expedite it.
We already approved this.
Yes, sir.
Well, what's your new information you're hearing and all, yeah?
I'm good, thank you.
Charlie, I just want to say one thing. Thank you to you and. Thank you to you and your staff. Don't go nowhere. Because if you do, don't leave us, okay? I mean, we, we just got to let our employees know how valuable they are to us. And I just wanna thank, thank you and your staff.
Thank you for saying that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I'll add to that, I've told you this once, but I'll add to it. You know, 20 years ago, the ice storm that we had the other night would have devastated our power system. Yeah.
Yes.
And, and for God's sakes, the, the improvements with the tree trimming and the new lines that you're installing and whatever else you do to get the megabytes.
Megawatts.
I know, I'm just kidding, megawatts. You've done a wonderful job, and you and your crew deserves all kinds of kudos for that.
Thank you, Pastor, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Means a lot.
Mr. Hughes.
George Charles is gonna come up next and present on some stormwater related issues.
We don't have any stormwater issues.
Bobby, you're gonna be saying this.
Yes, sir. Well, we can queue in whatever cap.
Where are you being?
There.
Good evening, board. What we have included on this list is known drainage features that, that need work. So these, these areas have been identified before, I'm sure we've discussed them before, you or individually with myself and, and you individually. The Red Robin Trent Road ditch embankment, stabilization and driveway culvert, that was identified during our, we're all aware of it, but it was identified more when the consultants did the FEMA assessments, but it did not fall under the FEMA improvements that we need to make. We actually have this, this project currently designed, permitted, and we have the bid documents available to put it out. We've just been funding for that project. The racetrack road culvert replacement, that's another pipe. It's a single 36-inch pipe that we currently have, was identified in a drainage study that needs to be upsized to two 36s. We have that design, we have the bid documents, it's not been permitted yet, but we, a funding source.
Where on Racetrack, where is that?
It's right near the lift station. It runs along the backside of the sewer easement that comes from the Derby Park side running under.
Okay.
And there, and there's a ditch on the other side, can you see it running along the sewer? We have additional bank stabilization on Trent Road that's been identified. The Norfolk Southern culvert replacement, which is on the backside of Derby Park that is underneath Norfolk Southern's railroad track, it's identified in a drainage study previously that needs to be upsized. And we've been in current conversation about that, but funding will, will be needed to make that.
Isn't that needed pretty much for the credit 40 expansion?
It's needed as much for the Derby Park subdivision as it is for.
And are you, what, what in our study about putting another culvert, even though we should have planned this before 43? What, there another study about putting another culvert under, under the 43?
I believe that's got to do with the development of West New Bern. And I'm not sure where their plans are on that drainage side of that when they reach their, their density levels that are requiring them to get their drainage upside.
Okay, so there's nothing on the books about the 43 connector?
No.
At this time, okay.
This, this was solely dependent at the time on the Derby Park face needing this additional culvert. We also have the East Rose culvert, which is where the East Rose lift station discharges. There are two floodgates there that need to be improved. We've got current corrugated metal pipes that go under the road that are eroding that need to be upgraded. And all these items that we've listed, including the drainage study that y'all have requested for North Hills is included in this list. We do have a proposal currently for that. Just need a funding source. Hancock Street culvert replacement, this is in the 400 block of Hancock Street. We have some unreinforced concrete pipe adjacent to the railroad tracks. It makes replacing that section of pipe costly.
What's going on at the Road Street right now? You got a temporary pump out there. I thought all that was completed and there's.
That's in conjunction with the next phases of the Duffy Field stormwater improvements. There's gonna be actually force made put in for that, for that line.
So you got two more phases of that Duffy Field stormwater project, right?
Yes, ma'am, there's gonna be a lot more construction going on in Duffy Field.
Now, with that East Rose culvert, is that the one you're talking about, the two big pipes there right at the end of the canal there?
Yes, ma'am, it comes right up to the, to the railroad tracks and goes underneath the road right.
By, by the cemetery, by Elfrim Cemetery?
Those two are the ones we're discussing right here in this list.
Okay, you're talking about replacing those big?
Those culverts, yes, ma'am, and putting new floodgates on the ends that, that we think will function better during normal rain events and hurricane events. And, and these, this is just one list. We could use the entire $6 million on corrective drainage throughout the city before we get into adding new things. But these were the top items that we know if we did tomorrow, you would see a direct benefit at completion. These are not all tied directly to hurricane drainage. These are tied to primarily day-to-day drainage. So when we have these 25-year rain events, we get five, six inches on the ground, these are the items that'll, that'll make our drainage work better. And they've been identified, and, you know, they're, they're gonna need to be done at some point, or we're gonna continue to suffer slow drainage in certain areas.
So now, let me ask you another question, please, about the, the drainage study for North Hills. Is that, that study, is that gonna be done by the same companies, Withers and Raven?
That study, actually, we received a proposal from Draper Aitken.
Okay.
They had done some additional work and have all of the drainage data because they did the preliminary damage assessments of all the major drainage basins within the city. So they had a lot of the data already to go on with that proposal.
So what, what type of, what type of drainage system are you thinking about putting in there? Have y'all gotten to that point?
No, ma'am, this, this proposal is just to give us a feasibility study of what we can do. This does not include any construction costs to implement what those recommendations may be.
Now, I thought we just talked a little bit, well, we talked more, a lot in detail at our first ARP workshop, about low end of water there about one foot. And I didn't, can you elaborate on that a little bit? Would that fall in?
That is, that is the direction we gave Draper Aitken when they gave us the proposal. So that's what they would be looking at, how to lower the water ta, water level in the canal along North Hills. Whether that be through differing culverts or pump systems. And that, and that's why we'd have to wait on the feasibility study to be completed to let us know what direction we're gonna need to head.
Okay, 'cause see, that's what I was, was, was thinking more down the line that, why can't you go with the same plan that you have over there? The same project that you have over on the Biddle Street side, Pond side, over on this North Hill side?
And, and that may be what they come up with.
Okay.
That, that may be, and I, I hate to speculate on what the study would show.
Okay.
There, there's a lot of variables in that section of town with elevation and water tables. So all those things need to be taken in, into account prior to giving us recommendations. Like I said, these are all known items. I know we've discussed, I'm sure, meeting, meetings, everybody's seen it. There's drainage, drainage needs throughout the city. What we're trying to address are the ones that we, we know are immediate reward. So, and we have lots of these already designed, we just need a funding source.
Over to you, Jeff.
Yeah, George, I was, I was, I'm, I'm all for this. If the board wants to vote on it, I'd, I'd vote to support every project on this page right now. My only question would be, is Jordan, during his presentation, he talked about the local assistance for stormwater infrastructure investment funds. Would these projects qualify for that?
I think once we get the criteria in the next month or so from the state, some of these may, that there was some, some engineering money available, there was some design money available, and we can certainly try to fund some of those through the grants. If we see one that really fits their criteria, we think will score high, we'll certainly go that direction.
Is there, is there a way, 'cause I know with FEMA, you can't spend money until it's authorized and approved, and there's all that headache. Is there a way that we can use our ARP funds right now that we have to do these projects and then apply for these grants, and if we get them, we can replace that revenue or expenditure?
I'll let Kim answer that.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, there is. We can do that. It would just be a matter of shifting it. We wouldn't necessarily, when we do the report, we wouldn't include that in the report at that time until we know for sure that's what we're spending on, yes.
Okay, all right, great.
Well, see, that's what the gentleman at our first workshop said to us, that we need to have projects, city projects, that we can tap in with state grant monies. So that's what I'm, I'm looking at. I mean, it was like $800 million that there was, he was talking about offering for water and sewer. So I hope that we can, you know, get some of this grant money.
And, and we certainly will, and this list is not inclusive of every drainage need.
Right.
If we see the criteria come out and there's another project we feel fits that, fits that criteria, certainly we'll go, go after that one, even if it's on a smaller scale. These were just larger known projects, some, some identified in drainage studies, some already designed and ready to be bid out. And, and I wanted to have some that, that we could, we could turn over rapidly if it was funded.
I know, ma'am.
Yeah. George, on the drainage study for North Hills, isn't that already budgeted? And you're waiting to send that out, or, I mean, 'cause you've done all this work on it.
No, no, there's not.
But you've already budgeted for it?
We have the proposal ready, we just do not have funding to, to do the proposal.
Okay, 'cause I thought we had already budgeted it. So everything we see in front of us, none of it is currently, or any part of it is currently in our current budget, correct?
Correct, and, and none of it can be absorbed in our current annual budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, these are all great projects. George, this is not a lot, I'm not saying this to any one person in particular, but I've been, this is my 16th year on board, and I think about 13 of those years, these pumps have been on. I have physically never, and I've checked these things, quite a long, ever seen a pump on at, at Road Street. I've never seen, and I've never seen any evidence, no manifestation of a surge of trash or whatever being pumped out. And I backed it up with a photograph in this phone right here, a week before the last rain event, that the culvert is three-quarters full of water.
Correct.
And I know you're working on, I don't know, Beth has some concerns, and, and we talked about it all along, Harrison. I still just, I just perplexed about the whole pump station. I certainly hope, it, it almost seems to me like maybe that water, instead of coming out of Road Street, pumping and going out, the two, the two pumps we have on Simmons Street extension, it's almost like that water has to go to reverse and go back down under railroad tracks and pump out at Simmons Street. I, I don't know, I've never seen it pump on.
Well, right, right now, and, and that's why we've got this project in here. Those floodgates, that dictates a lot of, of our ability to utilize the pumps there. And, and so when we get the floodgates operational, if this is funded, then, then you'll see the benefit of these.
What floodgates, which ones?
The floodgates on outsides of the pipes at, at East Rose.
You're talking about, like, check-bound floodgates?
Yeah, yeah, they're back, yeah, that's exactly.
The ones that you showed me?
Right.
I think those are the same ones that the seals were.
Yes, that's, that's exactly.
Those two.
That's right, yeah.
Yep.
So are these staff's recommendation for the top most impactful projects that are ready now?
Yes, that, that, those are the ones that we went over. We thought we'd have the biggest impact if, if several were funded.
Do we have other questions, comments?
Yes, I have a lot of questions, but, George, here, here's a concern that I have, and I know we discussed it in link at our first ARP workshop. It's to, with this pile of money just falling out of the sky in our hands, I mean, we need to, to really get some of this grant money. So with that, I'm gonna just use the North Hills because that's where the problems are now, towards I'm concerned. Because I think the Biddle Street pond is gonna eliminate some problems with water over on that side.
Yes, ma'am.
So we got two sides of the city over there. So I'm looking at the North Hill side. Why have a, I'm, I'm wanting some pumps put in over there because it seems like, and I know you gotta go, you're saying, telling me you gotta go through a study, right?
We, we do need some kind of feasibility study done to, I mean, we don't, we don't wanna invest in, in infrastructure that doesn't work.
Because of what, soil issues and environmental issues and?
Yeah, where we're gonna discharge the water, how we tra, how we get it under or over or around the railroad tracks. I mean, there, there's a lot of players in, in trying to discharge that water. But that, that's what the feasibility study would, would give us direction on, on where we needed to go. My, my concern would be, that, that one I totally agree with, but that was why I presented ones that were already designed. I hate that we go through this process, utilize this money for designs, feasibility studies, and then have no funding at the end. So several of these projects are, are, are ready to turnkey right now, but we just need funding.
So if you had to prioritize these projects right here for this $2 million for drainage, do you have them in a category right now that is most important for our citizens that live within these areas? I'm sorry to ask you that, but I just wanna know, how would you prioritize these? You got $2 million here.
To, to me, as an overview of the city, I.
Excuse me?
As an overview of the city's drainage, to me, they're, they're all a priority.
Okay.
They are, when you, when you ask priority, you're, you're prioritizing an area. But in the drainage game, it's, the impact of these are, are significant, and, and I think they're all good projects.
And I, and I understand the statement you just made, and I concur with you, but I have to say this much. Some of these areas, have they been experiencing the flooding issues that we're talking about right now? And I'm gonna use it Duffy Field. Have these, are some of these problems just come about within the last five, 10 years, if not even that?
Most of these have had drainage difficulty over the years. The one on Red Robin, the, the bank stabilization, that has been a concern. We have a sewer lift station there.
Yeah, I know that's.
But that also includes the culvert upstream, which is set on reverse grade, which will gain us eight inches of fall in that drainage system that goes all the way up to the food, to the old food line going up towards the highway. So, you know, incremental gains in these areas make a big difference, and they're, they're all worthy projects.
I have a question. Ms. Kim, just to reiterate, so we can approve this, spend the $2 million, and then apply for a grant and get the money back for already spending it?
So if we apply these projects towards the ARP funds, and then later receive grant funds to do those projects, well, we have to keep in mind, first of all, if you already have the project done and then apply for the grant funds later.
That's, that's basically what I'm getting at, so.
Because you have to be careful of, of the timing of that. But if you have something going in place, and let's say that was the plan to do this under the ARP funds, we may start it, and then you get funding, grant funding for, for the majority of the project, then you can, we can do some of that shifting to make sure that we apply those specific expenditures for that grant period towards the grant, and then allow those other expenditures that fell outside of the grant period into the ARP funds.
And when applying for the grant, do you put in there that some of the project has already been funded through the ARP funds?
I, I can't speak of how they apply for the grants, but typically, if there's a match, and these funds can be used for some match as well. And then, yeah, they would just have to share that information.
Thank you.
Over to you.
I think Jordan's anxious to say something, so.
Yeah, and I know we're, we're using a lot of terms and talking a lot of different grants, just to make sure we get the right question answered. If, if you're thinking of designating some city ARP money for some of these projects, and then going after some of that state infrastructure ARP money, and these projects are already in the works, we're doing construction, and we, you will not be eligible to be awarded the state ARP money. Those projects have to be identified, approved prior to construction. So you can send in, this is the project we wanna do, they approve the grant, all that before, and they determine what kind of pre-construction activities may be to be taken as far as environmental impacts or whatever before you do the project. So those projects would have to kind of be identified and go on that route. And if they get selected, great, but if the project's already in construction and you're already funding it with your own money, you're, you're not, that's not one that you're gonna be eligible to submit through the, for the state ARP.
So two things, so we could, since there's a couple of years to actually expend all this money, we could say theoretically, we're gonna set aside $2 million for these projects. You can go apply for it. If you get them, then we'll still have that $2 million set aside that we can do something else with, right? As long as we don't start the project. And then the other question I have is, couldn't you go borrow money for this infrastructure improvement and then reimburse yourself if we need to buy some more time?
I don't think you can pay that back, can you? No.
He stopped me.
Yeah, but all you do is just take that pot of money over here and. Yeah, but all you do is just take that pot of money over here, and you pay salaries with it, and you take the other money, and you pay something else, right?
Yeah.
Creative financing, is that what you're talking about?
Lost revenue category, that's where it allows you to have that flexibility for you to just do that shifting. So, it's, it's yes and no. You can't pay down debt, but you can shift the money.
So, what's the timeline on the grant application for the stormwater projects?
They will get the application finalized, what the application's gonna look like, uh, early summer. Uh, and they're anticipating taking applications through late summer and making awards this fall. So, that, that wouldn't be that far down the road if you wanted to go that route. So, by, by the end of the calendar year, I think you would know, yea or nay, whether you are selected for any of the state infrastructure ARP money.
Okay. And this is something that we need to take care of immediately, and not put funds aside and hold on and wait, when you just go ahead and take care of it.
All right, because this is what he said. He said, "We can tap into our own money for some of these projects, and then we got these projects, and then we can come back and apply for the state monies through the grants." Because they did that.
Okay, whatever you got.
I have a, um, question for, um, George. I know a while back, we, um, asked to do some research on all of the roads that need to be paved. Um, did you ever get that information to us?
On all of the roads that need to be paved?
Where, yeah, where we were, the, the board had asked for a cost analysis on how much it would be. Is that included in this $2 million? Because I see where it says additional needs paving, sidewalk and stormwater.
No, the, the $2 million only covers the projects listed on that. And of course, you can entertain doing additional paving sidewalks if you'd like. Um, but no, they were not included in that number.
Okay. Do you know when you'll be getting that information to us?
Now, now, we can work you on all of the unimproved right of ways throughout the city.
Right, that's what they asked, yep.
I thought it was unpaid. Are you talking about unpaid?
It was the unpaid roads, because I was trying to get the road in Primbrook.
Unimproved?
It's una, well, it was unadap, that one is unapproved.
Unimproved is undeveloped right of ways.
Right, that's the one that was in-
Unpaid maybe just, just maybe being occupied as a driveway or, or just not paved.
The paving that we discussed in regards to Primbrook, when I was trying to get that, uh, street, the unimproved street paved.
On Simms Street, yes, ma'am.
The board countered and said that they wanted to get a cost analysis on all of the unimproved.
Yeah, but I believe I have that number next to it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, um, George, I'm gonna ask you one more question. With this drainage study for North Hills, what time period are you looking at, just in essence, of getting that done?
Um, I, I would say ninety to 120 days while it turns around. It may be faster than that. It just depends on their staffing availability at the time.
Okay.
Ms. Hughes, you got anything else on this workshop?
Yes, sir. We're gonna have Jordan come up and talk about some, uh, water sewer projects as well, and then that should wrap it up to round things out. And Mayor, remember, I won't take long talking about any of these. Um, early on, the ARP funding, the, the criteria for how we were gonna be able to spend the city ARP money was very narrow. It looked like water and wastewater infrastructure was gonna be some of our best ways to, to spend that money. Now, as, as you've heard tonight, your opportunities have broadened quite a bit. So, what we, what we had put together previously was just a list of currently planned but unfunded water and wastewater projects that would all be eligible for the ARP money. Uh, these are all still eligible for the ARP money. Um, if you decide you'd like to fund any of the water or wastewater projects with the $6.7 million of, of city ARP money, any of these would be eligible, or all of them would be eligible. Um, a couple of these would also be probably decent projects to apply for the state infrastructure ARP money. Most notably, the one kind of in the middle there, the water and sewer rehabilitation in Greater Duffy Field or in other older areas of town. That's probably the type of work that, you know, rehabilitating infrastructure and increasing resiliency in older sections of, of the town are probably ones that are gonna score higher. Uh, and probably, once we see the application criteria come out, we'll draft a project around. The rest of those are more or less growing pains and probably would not score well through any of the state infrastructure ARP funding, so the rest of those will have to find a way to fund locally. Uh, but we probably will put an application in, you know, centered around a rehab-type project, um, to try to, to try to get our hand on some of the, the state ARP infrastructure money. So, be more than happy to talk about any of those, or all of them, or none of them, if you'd like.
So, your plan is definitely to put the water and sewer rehabilitation for Greater Duffy Field at the top of the list when you're applying for those funds?
When we, when we see the, what the application criteria exactly, I, I think that's, knowing what the criteria does, it still, it looks like, I, I think that a project of that nature, a rehab-type project, um, will probably check more boxes and score higher than putting new infrastructure in new areas to kind of alleviate growing pains. They typically want to see you fix your older stuff. Um, and, and some of those areas, I think there's a way to tie the improvements into more resilient infrastructure, and that, that's likely gonna help our chances too, but won't know for sure until that application package comes out.
Absolutely.
So, Jordan, is there still a lot of lead pipes within?
Uh, no, no, ma'am. We, we have very few lead services. To, to our knowledge, we have none that we know about. We stumble across one every once in a while that we, 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 we just didn't know was there, but we went, we did an inventory of what we thought lead service lines were back in the late nineties or the two thousands, and then going through and systematically replaced those areas, new water services. Uh, not saying there aren't any out there. We, we do stumble across one from time to time, and we have a, a kind of a process. Uh, our meter guys know when they're changing out meters, what to look for in the meter box. It may indicate a lead service line. Our guys in the street doing repair work know what to look for. Anytime we come across one, that's an immediate top of the, top of the list to get that completely removed from system in place. So, we, we have a very, a very low, um, amount of lead infrastructure left in our, our water inventory, inventory. Any questions? Good. Thank you.
Okay, so you have a well-rounded idea of several great infrastructure needs that we have within the city. So, we're happy to take any direction that the board would like to give us. If you'd like to think about this, if you come back at a future meeting, give us direction, and we will proceed from there.
I would need four hours for this. There's a lot to digest. I, I will, I will say, you know, my one and only statement is, is infrastructure, 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 because it's an investment for the future, not for just today, and some of the other needs are for today. But infrastructure, I mean, this has been kicked around for decades, and I join my colleagues who represent the choice neighborhood areas, um, in that that infrastructure has been neglected, like I said, forever, and it's time that we pay attention, and some of these needs, such as the East Road Station and some of the other things that we're doing, are important to me. Um, and I, I, you know, but I hear Alderman and Odom talk about that the enterprise systems can fund and pay for them easier than the general fund can pay for it. You know, I say we go ahead and, and do the projects we saw for $2 million, maybe that'll free up some sidewalk money so that, you know, because that we would have used someplace else to get, because that's the next thing, you know. The, the goal that I have is get these sidewalks in areas that have never had sidewalks. Start putting sidewalks in, and, you know, worry about repairs at a later date, but let's at least get some sidewalks in for our communities that's left. I don't know how we're gonna move forward with that, but that's, that's important, I believe, to a majority of us.
Okay. Is there a motion to end the workshop and get ready for the regular meeting, or do you wanna?
We would take a recess.
Talk some more about the finance, um, after the budget, and, yeah, I mean, the audit?
Well, okay. To, if you're saying when we do this in our, our budget workshop, talk about this then?
No, no, I'm saying that the audit, there's quite a bit of financial information here, particularly-
No, 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 I'm not talking about the audit. I'm talking about, talking about this more in detail, about the ARP monies in our budget workshop.
I'm, I'm ready to, I'm ready to spend some money myself.
I am too, exactly. That was my point, getting it.
I'm very concerned about a lot of things, whether or not they're, they're done in time, that it gets started.
Exactly.
That we don't lose funding.
So, we can plot some of these grants.
Bobby, I know you have some concerns, and, uh, I'm ready to make action, quit talking about it a little bit. I don't, I'm not-
I agree with you, and I'm prepared tonight, and we can give the city manager authorization to move forward with the $2 million infrastr, the drainage project. That's something that we need, you know, it's, uh, it certainly qualifies, and it benefits everyone in New Bern.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. It, it does benefit everyone here in New Bern. But I, when I'm sitting here looking at just the $45,000 for a plan for an area that's being neglected for, I've talked to some citizens over in that area that's lifelong citizens, and been living over that area, and they talked about how they have been dealing with this water issue ever since Martin Mary other left here. And now, and you know how long that's been. So, I mean, forty-five, forty-five thousand dollars for a plan, I think, I, I need more. I need for us to do a lot more for this, um, for this, um, infrastructure for stormwater. Um, I don't know how the rest of the board feel, but I think that, you know, our main interest here is for our citizens that live in those areas, and as, and I'm gonna echo off of a bingo. I know if I was one of those citizens that live in that area, I would be livid. Uh, this board, not this board, even boards before us, that this problem has not been resolved in, in a better state that it's in right now.
You're talking about the North Hills Drive pond?
I'm talking about the whole Duffy Field, Greater Duffy Field area that's pro, experiencing water ish, stormwater issues. I'm not talking about a hurricane, just talking about stormwater. So, I mean, we got $6.7 million here. Um, uh, y'all can give me-
Start, and then, once that study comes back, I don't, uh, again, how long?
He said about ninety to 120 days.
Okay, so when the study comes back, then we'll know what funds are needed to enact the study, whatever the study recommends. Then I guess we could appropriate additional funds at that point.
And, and I'm not trying to knock out any electric or water projects, because we, these are big projects. It's just consumed that little $6 million, uh, $6.7 million.
If your house is floating away, you ain't gonna be able to use your electricity.
Huh?
I said if the house is floating away, you're not gonna be able to use the electricity.
Exactly. So, you know, with Jordan's water projects and electric projects, um, that was what we discussed in our capital improvement plan. Um, but right now, like I said, we got $6.7 million. Y'all can give me $1.1 million for Duffy Field, and you, Alderman, Odom, you know, you might not need to have any drainage issues or problems of-
I thought we just spent like a couple million dollars. Aren't we taking something up tonight about financing Duffy Field for a few million dollars tonight?
There, there, there are several phases coming up in Duffy Field for stormwater improvement, yes, on a separate note. But the North Hills area is not included in those studies. Uh, but I will say, you know, without having a construction price, or how much this is gonna cost, um, the, the last several ponds we've done like this, you're in the seven, eight hundred thousand dollar range. Um, if you wanted to take that number, that was 2.1 to 3, that would probably cover what will be-
Let me ask you a question, George. Uh, so Barbara's concerned, you know, Martin Mary, uh, the, um, the quarry, Ringus Creek Quarry to close, you saw significant differences, right? If you're pumping on Rose Street, when you get the extra two phases done, and, and that water is treated with a retention sec, primary secondary-
Yes, sir, it'll be treated before it's there yet.
Well, when you get through and wherever you pump it to, you're doing it at negative two feet below, two feet below sea level, is that right?
Um, the basis-
The inverted is about two feet. Okay, so I assume that the impeller at the Simmons Street is probably sea level. Is that possible?
Simmons Street, the Simmons Street's pumps, where they're set, are based off of the current culvert that goes underneath the railroad.
And what would that be? Is that, is that about sea level? Is it, is it a negative, is it an inverted north foot?
I would have to look at the plans, give you the exact-
Well, what I'm trying to say is that if, if the Rose Street pumping and running, the hydrology of the water that's sitting in Simmons Street area, wouldn't it migrate over to the negative area just like it was doing, gravitating over to the rock quarry until it quit pumping it? Wouldn't that help some if that was up and running?
It, it, it may, and, and that's where the, the hydrology study's in, and relying on, on the professional consultants to give us some answers.
Well, I know that I can speak, I think I can speak for Alderman Harris, and Alderman, Alderman Bex, and myself. We don't wanna micromanage, but I don't think that them pumps are running to their maximal good use and benefit of the citizens, and I'm more than willing physically go out there with you or whoever else and watch those things get pumped down where they should, and come back six hours later, eight hours later, whatever, and check them out and figure out why there's three quarters of, at any given time, three quarters of those culverts are full of water.
So, so Mayor, we, you've been discussing this probably about three years. What's the solution? Because I'm actually tired of these, you know, we're, we're going out here and doing all these studies. What is gonna be a solution? Because the mayor has been asking literally every meeting. I'm not coming directly at you, but I'm just, I'm trying to get to a point of resolution in regards to the statement that he makes every time about these pumps. I mean, what all money do we need to allocate for all of these studies? Like, I've been saying that infrastructure, these grants was coming down. Why are we not going ahead and get all the studies out and figure out what needs to be done so that we can take care of the infrastructure, so it's done, and then you continue to maintain it moving forward? Because this is the same thing over and over again, and people are still suffering.
But, but in this case, in the North Hills area, we, we need the study. Um, I'm not, I'm not a huge proponent of wasting lots of tax dollars on studies. I'd rather build things that we know are gonna work. Unfortunately, in this case, we don't know what to build or how to address it until we have some data on it. And that's what the feasibility study's gonna provide. So, that gives us a start.
Oh, that's what works, to go back to the NC State study that studied all that already prior to implementation of that pump system. And I don't think any, I'm not aware of anybody that's really gone back and contacted NC State and tried to review back over all that information. Obviously, it was, it was engineered to work. I, I've absolutely never seen it working the way I think it, it should and could.
Are you talking about that drainage field they have there on?
On Simmons Street.
On Simmons Street, that's what you're talking about, that whole study? And I always heard that, that North Hills, you know, unfortunately, should not have been built there because it was so low. But we didn't have permitting, yeah, we didn't have permitting and processes, I guess.
The subdivision that came behind it shouldn't have been put there, because that's pushed a lot of water down on North Hills.
So, George, George, is, is any way that you can go back and review that study without creating another study, which has already covered all that area? Is there any way that you can do that and get back with us on that?
We, we can certainly provide you with what the, the purpose of that.
That's what the mayor's saying.
But I, I mean, I'm still in favor of you, of getting the update, but I'm just saying, it's like, I like what, what Alderman asked us said in regards to like Charlie, and again, this is not you, this is just a general statement. He's presenting to us what is gonna take care of things in the future in regards to infrastructure that's needed. I feel like with all of these important infrastructure needs that we need, we need to take money and allocate to have whoever's gonna come out here, whether it's one consultant firm that's gonna come and do all these studies, so that we know what money needs to be allocated to fix all of these issues, so that we're not in these meetings when we're getting grant money from whatever hurricane or whatever came, that it's just maintaining from there, because I've, I've heard that, you know, again, with these ditches, you know, some people, they, they don't feel like the ditches are being cleaned out, or, you know, they're, even if it was cleaned out, it's still, they're still having water issues. So, it's, there's gotta be more to it, you know what I mean? And I just feel like we, we just, we, we have to find a solution, because people are suffering, communities are suffering.
Well, it's only gonna take ninety days, ninety to 120 days to do the su, study. It'll be a brand-new, updated study on brand-new, uh, infrastructure that we've already, or that we've probably improved on some since the last one was done 20 years ago. So, let's, I mean, let's just do the study, get the results, come back, tell us what it's gonna cost to fix it, and we'll look at doing some ARP money to, to fix it. But it's-
I'll go on with anything. I just, I would think that there's some asphalt on that that somebody needs to review from about 16 years ago. But I, I, anything the board wants to do to, to correct some of the strains, I'm all for.
So, you're saying that NC State's study that was done?
That's the biggest man-made, uh, stormwater retention pond state in North Carolina.
So, that would save, that would save money right there from, from a study point?
There should be a set of asphalt drums on that.
Would you check on that and let us know?
Sir?
Are there a set of asphalt drums on that? Do you know?
I'm, I'm, I'm sure there are. I'm sure there are.
Has anybody reviewed them lately? I mean, seriously?
Sir?
Has anybody reviewed those asphalt drums?
I have not, I have not seen them.
Yeah, well. Uh, Barbara, you'd like to go there and review them with me, wouldn't you?
Yes, definitely.
Let's have a doodle here, go look at them.
So, Jordan, to actually put in a, of, of, uh, project like you have over on Biddle Street, putting in those pumps, okay? Putting in those electrical pumps, I think you said, Mayor? The electrical pumps over on the North Hills Drive side. Is that looking at about, what, a $5, $6 million project? Just in essence, or more?
Just, just for one pond in that area, though, I, I think, uh, when, when I went back, see, we had, you know, all those proposals, it was about 2.1. I think if you, if you push that to $3 million- I think if you if you push that to $3 million to include 700 or 800 to do a pond system and pumps in the North Hills area, I think that would probably cover that number.
Is that something that, Mayor, that you think, you got more experience with it? I don't mind giving anybody credit, because credit's due, you got more experience in this? Yes.
I would go get about 10,000 gallons in an electric pump and put about a foot lower than the impeller on those two pumps, those 21,000 gallons, and get some of that water out there.
So then.
And kind of commensurate with the negative two feet invert over there on the road street, if you did that, which I don't believe we could do it.
So how about, does this, how does this board feel about instead of a $2 million, raising it to $3 million for this drainage project?
I'm going to stick with the $2 million, just so we can get the information back and then come back and add.
Because I already told you it's going to be like a $2, $3 million project.
Just for that one alone?
No, 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 ma'am, no, this, the $3 million would cover the the projects that were proposed on that list, and that does leave 700,000 in there for construction of whatever may be proposed in the North Hills area.
All right.
That that just gives some funding for what may come up out of the study.
Yes, if the board would just like to give us direction, if you would like to give us direction to go ahead and start moving forward with the $2 million projects, since we get the study back, we'll bring it back to you, then if you'd like to fund additional A R P funds to that North Hills project, we can do it at that time.
Well, I mean, the coworkers director at times sits in the back of Red Bank Baddos, and the new coworkers director's right there, and George has been in them, I would say three and all will meet with these gentlemen and and kind of freshen up on, with those asphalt, what's what's what, man, you just got here, but we're talking about that pump over there on Simmons Street. Yes, sir.
My only question would be, is the the $2 million worth of projects that were presented for Stormwater, you said they're impactful, they would help citywide. The grant opportunity that Jordan's got to go after, are we going to spend $2 million on these projects that are ready, that would make it easy to go apply for a grant, and then we try to scrounge and find other projects that we're going to try to get a grant for? Should we do some swapping? I think the board, I think, is in agreement that we're okay with spending $2 million for drainage. We want to see something happen, but I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot by trying to do something right now so we can say we just spent $2 million on drainage and we lose out on additional funding that may be available. Does that make sense?
Correct, and and we're so close in the window of getting that criteria back from the state, there may be some on this list or some that weren't included that that will fit into that grant profile that that we can go after.
Well, can we, is the $45,000 at least already allocated, or, I mean, can we at least approve that and not have to wait?
The funds for that proposal are not allocated right now.
So can we at least approve that to be moved forward with, so outside of this, if we're going to hold off?
Can you give us any direction you'd like to do, sir?
Spend, 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 I say do it.
I mean, I would like to make a motion that we at least allocate the $46,000 to do the study for North Hills if we're not going to spend the $2 million.
All right, all right, is everybody good with that?
I'm good with that.
No, we're not going to spend the $2 million on the drainage projects?
Yes, we are, but just for the study. Go ahead and give the direction.
But I don't think they're going to go out tomorrow and spend it, we're just saying, hey, you've got this pile of money, we're segregating it, and we put importance, you know, we're segregating it, but tomorrow go out and spend.
Let's quit kicking the can down the road and get this drainage fixed.
No, we're not.
We're not. It's basically what it was, the way that it was presented is that if there is a criteria that's coming down in a couple of months, 30, 60, 90 days, in regards to that, for the filling out these projects, I wouldn't want to hold off on the feasibility study for North Hills if it's going to take 90 days. Because he was saying about the criteria. I'm all for $2 million either way, I'm just trying to go with the flow in regards to how the board wants to try and go after these state funds. And this is on the lower spectrum because it's just a feasibility study. So that's what I was saying.
Any of these projects that are on this list that George has presented on the list that you're thinking about doing as far as for the grant funds, Jordan? Or do you have other projects that you are?
Alderman, I said, it really depends on the the application criteria, we will not know until summer.
Right, and it's not coming out.
These may score very well and be home run hits for the grant funding, these may be complete duds, and you really won't know because this is the first time the state has given out money like this for grants, true grants for stormwater infrastructure improvements, they don't even have an application really ready for it yet.
Right.
So if if you want to wait until summer, that's probably not a bad idea, you want to out, you know, just kind of carve out some city A R P money now, let George do whatever study work he wants to, which is on the low end of the expenditure side of that, then we will know by, in in 10 months, we'll know yea or nay whether we made it through the the application process and we were selected for the stormwater grants, we'll have a yes or no answer by the fall, which is typically an October, November window. So by the end of the calendar, you'll you'll know for certain whether you've got any additional state money to spend for these, or if you're going to spend all or, you know, just use entirely city A R P money to get moving forward.
And I think right now, all we can do is give direction, I don't think we could really vote on something without a resolution or anything like that. So I think the direction is, you know, Stormwater's a priority, we're willing to spend up to the $2 million, but let's get these studies going because we won't know what infrastructure money we're going to need without the studies.
Exactly, that's all I was saying.
And I have one more thing I want to bring up, and I'm going to just ask you quickly, instead of getting Killman and everybody involved in it. This A R P money, the city of New Bern has spent a tremendous amount of money in backfilling for, I know the police department and fire department especially, in backfilling for people that are out with COVID. I would like to know what kind of expenses we have invested there and possibly reimburse ourselves with the paying overtime for these employees that we've had to call in. I know you get one man out on the fire department, and you've got to pay somebody a time and a half for 24-hour shift.
That's right. I don't think we, I don't think I pull a number for you right now.
I understand that.
There are considerable fees that have come from this, as well as, as well as now, our insurance, and we are self-insured, we have to pay for COVID testing, so those are, those types of things are reimbursable.
I think, I think that would be a good thing for us to look at as well, I hope the other board members will agree with me, but I think I'd love to see what kind of money the city has paid out of general fund or whatever, out of salaries for police and